Pleasant streams, we have called to order, have had the flag salute. And Commissioner Boyle has been excused as far as additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. Staff has confirmed that we are matching our header as far as streaming versus Zoom. So it now aligns with what City Council puts up there. Any other modifications to the agenda? All right, moving forward, citizen participation, we have.
Did we get a motion to approve it?
Oh, well, that's the agenda.
Oh.
Don't we, do we?
Aren't we doing approval of the minutes?
No, not yet.
Oh.
That's why I was kind of confused by what you're saying, but I was just going to roll with it.
Okay, I was looking for my thing. I thought you said changes are.
Addenda, yeah.
I'm ahead of myself, aren't I?
It's all right. So, citizen participation, we have no one in the audience, and any live streaming is visible only. So then we're moving into approval of minutes, and as previously mentioned by staff, we are changed, we have revised the header to align with City Council. Are there any other modifications to the minutes? All right, may I receive a motion?
A motion to approve the minutes for October 10th, 2023.
So seconded.
All right. So a motion has been made by Commissioner Swett, seconded by Vice Chair Oler. Commissioner Wayland, were you making a request to second, or was, did you have comment?
Oh, I was just trying to be a friendly motion person, saying as amended.
Oh, okay, perfect, as amended, perfect. So we have a motion to approve the minutes for October 10th, 2023, as amended, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes unanimous. Onto our agenda item 6A, public hearing. It is? 6:07, I will open the public hearing for amendments to Milton Municipal Code 1750 at 6:07 PM. We have no one in the audience, so I will go ahead and close our public hearing as of 6:07 PM. All right, so with that, I think that takes us into Agenda Item 7A, which is amendments to the Milton Municipal Code 1750 sign code. With that, I will turn it over to you, because I hate hearing myself talk for that long.
Great job. Okay, um, yeah, so in your pocket, I've tried to identify the items that we discussed at the last meeting, and tried to highlight what we changed, what I changed related to that. Let me see, what's the best spot to start in? So it might be easiest if we're, to work with the clean copy, which starts on page 35. We don't necessarily have to go through the specific changes, but they are highlighted in yellow to try to help navigate. There is one, there's a hard copy if you want.
Is there one?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't see it.
So we, the direction was to kind of add the language to accessory signs, so I tried to do that. We had a lot of discussion on murals, whether or not it should require a permit, even if it's not a sign. I did some review on some other cities, and most of them didn't require anything. There was at least one or two that didn't require them to have a permit per se, but they were required to submit for kind of review and approval by city staff. And so that's the direction I went with this. Again, trying to make sure that it's clear in the future, the difference between sign area and sign plus base, I just sort of added a reference where it talks about maximum sign area to go back to where we explain how we're calculating. We moved the new proposed design criteria. The original draft just had it in the Uptown District. We discussed requiring it for all monument signs in the city, so that got moved up. Added language that for electrical message, electronic message signs, that the intent was if you have a monument sign, you get the same area on both sides. Revised portable sign section, we had all kind of felt like saying temporary and permanent was very confusing. And so I will direct us to that section, because I do want to show my latest proposal and see what people are thinking. If you go to section, so page 52 and 53, I changed it to basically a portable sign, or portable signs are allowed with a permit under the following provisions. And again, I could change that wording a little bit maybe, but the idea being that if you have a permit, these are what you can do. If you don't have a permit, this is what you can do, and anything else is prohibited. So getting away from permanent and temporary to permitted and unpermitted. And then I, we had talked about adding feather signs under the temporary sign section, feeling that now that they've been around for a couple decades, they're a little more acceptable as long as they, again, are temporary, follow those guidelines. I did change the distance, I think the distance was 300. I measured what like the opening, because I think Safeway had them for a while, one on each side, so I kind of measured that, and 100 was sort of that distance. So I didn't know if we were open to kind of reducing that down to what has been used, and I don't think, or if you guys wanted to stay at the 300. And if there's anything I missed, which is very possible, but I don't think so. I'm, so I'm open to questions, or we can just open it up for discussion? I don't know if there's anything.
Um.
It seems like there was one other item we discussed that I went, had done research on, but I'm not finding it, so we'll see what happens in this discussion.
Okay, well, yeah, let's go ahead and open it up for discussion. Does anyone have any points, comments, questions? Anything? Yes, Commissioner Wayland?
Thank you very much. I want to start my remarks by just saying thank you for excusing me on the prior two discussions, and I'm under no illusion that the suggestions I'm about to make are, like, there may be water under the bridge for you all, but I just wanted to make mention of them as a thing to consider. And also, I do need to note that I may not be able to stay through the meeting, and so if I just sort of pack up my stuff and leave, please, you know, don't worry, everything's okay as it can be, but life is what it is, so. In looking through, I first have to say, an amazing level of improvement over our current zoning code for signs. I think it's just really impressive to see how we've tried to really, or you all have tried to really work to identify what the issues are, how can you work within the law to address them? And so I'm just going to highlight a couple of things and ask for people's thoughts, is it worth pursuing or not, you know, so. I wanted to, if that's okay with you all.
Yeah, and my only comment is, as you're going through, would it be possible for you to just let us know what page you're on?
Sure.
Just because it helps us follow along.
Okay, well, maybe it's easier to just go in sequence. I'll just mention things and then work through it in sequence.
Okay.
I would just love to get some, a little more clarification on measuring the signs, and really be thinking through that process and how it's done, and I have an example for a different sort of approach. Another type of a concept is really thinking through, and I think it's a big improvement, the portable signs with or without a permit versus a temporary sign, which doesn't seem to call for a permit, and just think about, gee, is there some fine tuning that could be done to prevent loopholes? The other thing that I was really looking at was, some of the sign sizing just seems big, and so I hope that there's a conversation on perhaps reducing some of the sizes. There's a couple of concepts that may be worth including, and maybe that's where I should start, is confirming whether, when it comes to temporary signs in the right-of-way or on private property, or the portable signs, seems they can be in the right-of-way or on private property. And I may be misinterpreting a few things, but an idea that I noticed in another city's code was, A, the idea of a permission for the abutting owner. I saw that in the code, but I also saw the statement, "And the owner may remove the sign without notice." And I wondered if that was a concept worth incorporating in this code. So if somebody comes out, has a problem with the sign, they could call the city, or they could pick it up and say, hey, I got it leaning against such and such, come get it. But it seemed to be a more, a more respectful way to be managing temporary kind of signs. And so, and because of hearing people's stories about some signs get put in the right-of-way, they're in a tricky bend in the road, they can't see, and, you know, the city's saying, well, and the person's saying, but it's not about whether I agree with it or not, it's just not safe to have it there. So that was the idea of an owner being able to say, it's in front of my property, it's, I don't agree with it, or it's a problem for me, and to be able to remove it. So is that a concept worthy of including in here?
So your question is, should we add the language that they can remove it without notify? And that was my intent.
Okay.
Is that homeowners are in charge of, I mean, they're in charge of snow clearing and everything else in front of it, that they could remove it if we feel like we want to. I mean, I did clarify that the city can remove any sign in the right-of-way, so I can add that if, if we feel like that would prevent.
Yeah, we've got a comment from Commissioner Johnson.
On that, because Reese, can you hear me, Al?
Yes, thank you.
There was an article on the news just recently about a gentleman in a town here in Washington, in this area of the state, that's going around and picking up all the signs that he does not like, and isn't actually checking with the homeowners. So it's a flip side of it, that people are allowed to put their signs if they have permission from the owners, but this gentleman isn't an owner of any of these properties. So I don't have, the abutment, I think, I assumed it was part of it already, that it was understood, that it's abutting, when something says abutting the property owner's property, they have the right. The thing about, do you have, does this owner have to notify the city? You know, it's mixed.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think you'd need to require any of that, that they could just remove it.
Notification.
And I do think from a discussion you and I have had about other things in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
There is some work I think the city needs to do to kind of clarify that point of who's responsible for what, but if the idea is that we want to just add that they can remove it without notice, I'm, I mean, that's a pretty minor.
What's the consensus on that? Has everyone, I'm seeing, head shaking that it seems okay?
That's fair. I think the only reason that an owner would need to contact the city is if they in particularly know that the owner of said sign would cause any issue.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Real quick time out, I did just get an email from Tom. He was hoping to feel better, I guess it sounds like he's had a cough this week, and so he does apologize, but we did notify us, so.
Okay.
So, thank you for that.
And then, before moving forward, how, how is she doing for sound?
Could be a little closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm glad to be closer.
Thank you.
So the consensus was yes, add the language, sorry.
And so it's that, we have some language that just talks about abutting, and I just, property owner and the owner may remove the sign without notice. And just for the record, a lot of these suggestions are coming from reading Gig Harbor's code, and I've already provided Manager Stollnecker with a copy and, you know, highlighted, so it's not like we have to get it verbatim, but the concept's there, and I'm sure she can make it even better, so. The other, another idea was, what do commissioners think about, and I don't know if it's legal to say, in essence, that signs placed in the city right-of-way must be applicable to Milton businesses and an election, or, you know, people you could vote for? And just a tiny bit of background on that, you may remember years back when the cannabis stores were legal in Fife, and we just had all of these signs splattered all over the city, talking about a business in Fife and promoting it. And to me, I was offended, how dare you mess up my right-of-way, and it seems Fife keeps 20th Avenue nice and clean, go talk to them. And also with an election, you can tell right where Fife and Milton are, down there on 20th Street, and it's just like, wait a minute, this is my city, is my thinking, and I don't vote for that person, why are those signs in my city's right-of-way? So I don't know if it's legal, because I don't know if that really goes into being content-based, but I wondered if commissioners thought it was a worthy idea to pursue.
Okay. Uh, yes, Commissioner Johnson?
I think that's interesting, but for me, part of it is, what is time-consuming to do all this minutia with signs, you know? I mean, I understand some, Fife wants, I don't know if we advertise, if our businesses advertise down in Fife, but to have our staff have to always check, who's going to be the enforcer? Is it going to be like the man in this neighborhood that went around and just picked up the sign? I mean, if the homeowner, for instance, on the abutting one, I'm not against it, but if he throws away the sign, I'm against it. See, that's my only problem I have, because if you're a political sign, it costs money. So it's a disadvantage to people running for office if they happen to put it there, and they really didn't do their research, which they need to do to see what the ordinance says. But I think it's just a lot of minutia of having to have our staff go out, there's too many other things more important staff-wise.
And I would, I would suspect it's not legal, especially because that does group political signs, and there's so much.
Yeah.
There's very little restrictions on those, with, again, we're balancing State of Washington Supreme Court and the federal Supreme Court, so.
Yeah. Um, yeah, my, my thought on that is, I feel like we're covered as far as advertising goes, that it was kind of, if you're advertising for a business, that if you're putting it in the right-of-way, it's because it's abutting your property.
If it's in the right-of-way for a business, it has to be an event, so they would have to have specific dates. And I do know, like, a daycare may be next door, but they might want to.
Yeah, but, yeah, but like, the Fido sign or whatever, it's like, that would be something that's probably not technically acceptable.
Yeah, if it's just advertising their business, we would toss them anyway.
Yeah, or the I buy homes is.
By Canon and Dave's.
Yes.
In that, because that is that city area.
Yeah.
So with an area like that, and, excuse me if this was already discussed, could said business get a permit to put a sign in that area?
So under the current draft, that area is an island, and so we've specifically said not in islands.
Okay.
The hope someday is to actually plant something there, it's on the schedule, and I, I never hit when they have time to do it. So the hope is maybe spring now, we could plant some stuff, which would then make it less attractive, too, for people to put stuff in.
Yeah.
But the, under this, there would be nothing there.
Yeah.
No big signs, no little signs.
And then, I hear what you're saying about politics, I'd be worried about what was allowed or not, and then also just thinking of like, the Safeway, yes, it's technically here, you know, if it's something near there, but it's like, that's also kind of Edgewood's grocery store, I, I would hate to kind of blockade too much as far as if it's relevant to the community, or the people using that street or something as far as elections go. I'm not totally opposed to it. But I guess checking with the group, how do people feel, should we consider adding something specific to Milton business only, or is this kind of acknowledged and perceived?
Personally, the city lines and areas from Edgewood and Milton could get a little difficult for just like, the average citizen to know, like, am I allowed to put this Milton sign here? Is it still Milton, or is it Edgewood? Is it on this side of Taylor, or this side? And that, we're all pretty intricate with the different communities, I think it would be hard to enforce that.
Yeah. Uh, yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Well, are there other cities that do that?
Good question.
Yeah.
I mean, even regardless.
And the research, I mean, I don't know, I didn't see it in the Gig Harbor one, so I'm just sort of curious.
Regardless, to me, I feel like our, our advertising guidelines cover it.
Yeah. Okay. So, everyone's feeling like we're kind of okay staying silent on that in general?
For now. I think if it becomes an issue, definitely revisiting it and checking the legalities and parameters around that.
Great.
Good idea, though.
Perfect.
So, Manager Stollnecker, could you just review the change from sandwich board signs to portable signs?
Page?
Well, I use the red line stuff, and if that's okay with you, if that's okay with you, it's page 28 of 58.
Twenty.
Page 28.
And the, the thing I'm, as I read it, I thought it was that portable signs, there's two kinds, one that calls for a permit, one that doesn't, and that a portable sign is in essence something that sits on the ground, independent of a building, or some other structure. And so I really am glad to see that there is something in there that says, the portable sign, requiring a permit 10 feet from the primary entrance. I, I think that's really another way to just reinforce that idea of, you know, this is, this is a, an invitation with, in close proximity to a store owner's abode. So I appreciate that. But under that, portable signs with a permit, on page 28 of 58, item that's number five, and it starts with, signs may be, and it should be displayed, only during business or operating hours, and shall be removed when the business is closed. So I'm wondering how the commission feels. My past history has included a lot of, you know, restaurants and so forth, and, you know, a restaurant might open for breakfast and close. Public can't come in, but public can phone in an order, and someone can go deliver it. Some businesses, it's, you can place your order or conduct business with the, with the establishment 24/7, now that we have the internet as we do. So in my thinking, it was putting something in there that clarifies that it's, that portable sign is out there to welcome the public when the public can actually, in person, enter the business.
Yes.
Okay. So that would be a suggestion, and I didn't know how other commissioners thought about that. Because again, I think loopholes, and again, I think, how can we help business owners be clear? So, thank you.
Uh, yes. Commissioner Elstead?
In the phrasing of it, it does state that it can only be during business operating hours. So if, I just don't see the need for the extra, so I know clients can book appointments with me 24/7, but the salon is not open for people to come in, so we wouldn't, at that point, we wouldn't be able to leave our sign out because we're still operating. And I, I don't necessarily know how many businesses in Milton are open 24/7 that would just leave their signs out, but, I mean, most businesses have pretty strict operating hours.
Yeah, um, any other comments?
Agreed. This was kind of a daily special, here's the soup of the day, come in for our special sandwich, and then the day is done, you pull in the sign.
Yeah. I would say I'd only really worry about it if it helps staff as far as that goes, just because the likeliness of it even getting enforced.
Yeah, I mean, likely, who's going to drive around at 10:00 PM and report every business that had an employee not put their sign in?
And then the business actually stating, oh, well, I was taking it online, like, for a business to actually rebut that and take it that far, I just don't see the context of taking it above and beyond.
I mean, it's, it's pretty clear the way it's written, except for that typo, displayed instead of displaced, but, yeah. Other than that, I think it's really clear.
Okay.
Okay, well, I, operating business means to me, you're doing business, and if someone can book an appointment, if someone could place an order, I mean, to me, that's operating my business. But I just put it out there to point out that there's different ways to interpret it, and was just working to be clear about it. The other, it, so on that topic, portable sign, requiring a permit versus down at the bottom of the page, portable signs are exempt from permit under the following provisions. And one says, step one on page 29 speaks of advertising an event or happening, I noticed that we don't have a definition for an event or happening. As an example, if I'm a clothing store, I could have a 50% discount on an article of clothing every month, and say, that's my event. And therefore, I can leave the exact same kind of sign, a portable sign, I can just leave it out there all the time, and there isn't anything in here that even says you have to be within 10 feet of the door. Did I miss that?
I feel like that's covered in point number two, where it can only be up for five days within a 30-day period.
And then picked up within two hours.
Correct.
Okay, but it doesn't say operating business, I'm having a sale, I'm selling hats for the month of November, or I'm selling snow boots for November, that's my event.
That sounds like somebody that is trying to push the envelope.
And we have those.
But they can be told no, we don't have to codify it.
I, I'm not opposed to, because we also use the event or happening, I believe, under temporary signs, so we could very easily do a definition for that. But you are correct that this category is limited to four, five days out of the month. So if they were trying to do the loophole on the one, they would still be limited to five days out of the month, and that eliminates that. It may be worth doing it for the temporary sign more than this one, but we can definitely look at a definition as easy.
Okay, and to clarify, there's no limit? So if I'm an ambitious clothing store, salesperson, and I want to put a bunch of directional signs out there saying, come and buy a hat, as long as they're 500 feet apart, I can put them in the right-of-way?
On the day of the event.
So if, okay.
And you have permission from the abutting property owners?
Okay.
I mean, being a business owner on Oak Street there, like, our salon did a big event in July, we didn't put out any signs for it because, not knowing what we could, but for that, it would, even with me, like, I want to, we could put signs out, we got this special, we have this stylist with openings, we've got this, but ultimately, it's the effort on like, the owner's part as well, like, how much effort am I going to put into trying to get these loopholes and get people in? Like, it is pretty clear verbiage, and.
And again, it's only five per month.
Five days, yeah, per month.
And again, we can fine tune the event, what an event or happening is.
And a lot of events with, businesses need to have a city permit for the event anyways, unless it's inside, completely in that, and then even part, our permission from the building owners, in order of how to do that, and so that would then go in with a permitted sign or.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Johnson?
So sales are considered an event? Is that what we're saying?
That's my question, how do you define event?
I don't think so. I think it's a business action and not an event.
Or Veterans Day sale.
Unless they're doing like, a closing event, or a holiday special event, but again, those would be something that would not last longer than the season, or the day, or the weekend for set event. or the weekend for said event.
I mean, I'm kind of in the mode of, we've got five days and a 30-day period. We've got the intent pretty lined up. We meet every month. If we start getting complaints and seeing, it is something that we can put on a future agenda, like, we've done with the scene where, you know, we realize, oh, we missed. I mean, that's exactly why we're going to, back to signs, is we did this a few years ago, and then went, "Oh, we missed some information. Let's go back." Let's think of this as a living document that we can modify, that setting this, we're not setting this in stone for, forever.
That's fair.
If that works for everyone. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, moving forward.
Okay, thank you. So, something relevant to this is that issue of abutting property permission. And in the red line, strike through underlined portion on page 20 of 58, letter C, about two-thirds of the way down, under signs in the right-of-way. Except for government-authorized signs, temporary signs must have the approval of the abutting owner. Well, we are, and later in the code with this new revision, which I appreciate, temporary signs are not the same thing as portable signs.
So, I need to add language to that.
So, I'm, I'm, I mean, we're all thinking, yeah, it's not permanently attached, but we're, with this latest revision, is that something that might need to be?
Should it say temporary portable signs?
It should be temporary, yeah. All, I mean, it is in the portable section, so even though it wasn't clear there, it's in both sections. But I can add something, non-permitted portable signs as well, since we've, since we've, that's just one of those that we didn't carry through.
On the red line, it's page 20.
On 20?
Red line, page 20.
Right, number C. So, you want to add portable to temporary?
Or it was unpermitted temporary signs.
Right, because it's the unpermitted temporary signs that can be, or unpermitted portable signs. That can be in the right-of-way.
It's like, I have no 20. I'm sorry.
There we go.
Saying temporary and portable. Okay. All right.
Maybe we'll just say signs in the right-of-way and just get rid of temporary.
Yeah.
Oh, that takes care of everything.
So, except for government-authorized signs, anything else has to have approval.
Yeah.
That's great.
Okay.
Okay.
And is that also on 30?
30 is, 20, it's on 29 and 30. All the portable signs prohibited. Let's see. There's, on page 29, six, "Signs in the right-of-way must have permission from the abutting property owner."
Yeah, and that's just in the temporary sign section. So, we're okay there.
And then also on 30, "Approval of the abutting property owner is required for..." So, it's mentioned several times.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very emphasized.
All right.
Okay. Uh, thank you for your patience and your consideration. On the issue of temporary signs, and I'm looking on page 29 of 58, and temporary signs, and there's a, just information about putting it on private property, and there's information about putting it in the right-of-way. So, the temporary sign, let's just use, you know, the campaign signs that we see, or any kind of a sign that's, goes through the surface of the ground. That's how I had to separate it. If it's a portable sign, it's sitting on the ground. If it's a temporary sign, something that's holding it up is actually going through the surface of the ground. And that idea, again, of a private property owner, say a shopping plaza, it can get sprinkled with all sorts of signs. And I, just food for thought is, again, if somebody comes into a shopping plaza and starts putting out signs, it might be worthwhile to say, "You can't put temporary signs without the approval of the property owner when you're putting them on private property."
Signs must be owned by the property owner or business on the property. No off-premise signs allowed. Temporary signs need to be spaced every 100 feet.
You know, I mean, not all temporary signs are in the ground. Some temporary signs are affixed to a fence.
So, it says, "Signs must be owned by the property owner or the business. No off-signs allowed." So, nobody else could come on, nobody else could come on, because on page 30, it says, "Signs must be owned by the property owner or business of the property. No off-premise signs allowed." So, it means nobody from the outside, who doesn't have a business there, could do anything.
So, four covers that.
Yeah, that's how I understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then we had also discussed just like the 30, within the 90-day period. So, we felt fairly, between that, the 100 feet, being within a property owner, it, the intent there, we felt, was fairly clear. And again, if, if this is kind of a living document, if we find that someone found a loophole, we can always come back to it, but I'm not...
Okay.
Yeah.
Going on on page 30 of 58, right-of-way, temporary signs, so temporary signs in the right-of-way. It seems to me if I was an aggressive, or really wanted to promote my business, given the time limits in temporary signs, I could convert what I'd put on a sandwich board sign and just put it on a stake and stick it in the ground. And now, I'm not limited to how close to the door. Yeah, I got to get permission of the abutting property owner, but it gets to stay out for a whole lot longer. And I didn't know if there was a way to tighten that up a bit. And I know this is a really daunting process, and I can't say it enough. There's been so many great improvements.
I guess that's where we came into, again, that advertisement or event, or it has to advertise an event or a happening. And again, I, that's why I think it's probably more valuable here with to have some sort of a definition to kind of clarify that.
Okay.
That was the intent. And I, and again, right now, we go through and we clear out, even under our current code, if they don't have, if there's nothing that really makes it sound like it's an event or a happening, we clear them out.
Okay. Yeah, we have in the past had an Edgewood business that would do, you know, a yearly discount membership drive, and you would just have all of these signs along the right-of-way, and that's where, years back, that, you got to space them X far apart and such, so the history of things just keeps visiting. And I was curious about why a temporary sign in the right-of-way to advertise an event or a happening now gets to stay up, up to 10 days after the event, as is in number six. I was wondering what, what was behind that.
So, this is where I said we're balancing Supreme Court cases. The Washington State Supreme Court, probably 20, 30 years ago, came out with that you cannot limit a political sign, you cannot, technically, we cannot dictate when someone wants to post a political sign before an election, because we can't decide how long somebody thinks it, they want to run for something. And then, but they did determine that we could require them to remove it 10 days after an election. So, because we have to be content neutral on the national Supreme Court side, but we have to follow these guidelines for the state, that's where I blended it and put 10 days after an event, because that way, because the elec, uh, election signs have to be similar to if a church or a concert or whatever event, and so that way, it meshes those two. I'm using the 180 days, even though the state Supreme Court says we can't limit, because that covers the signing date for an elec, you know, when people have to register to run. And so, the likelihood is nobody's going to, I mean, if somebody did, I would have to, under, under state law, not enforce it. But that way, it kind of covers that end. And again, most of the signs that are out there are a specific event or election signs, and then, or they're just a business that's illegal and we tear them down. I did notice, I don't think I put how far apart, and I can't remember if there was a reason I didn't put how far apart on the right-of-way. So, we could put a, that they have to be so far apart, except for, yeah. I mean, obviously, though, if I'm a resident and I want a, a sign, and you want a sign, and you want a sign, theoretically, I'm not going to pick those, but we could put a distance, again. Sometimes, these are not that I'm actively enforcing, but if somebody's trying to break the rules or trying to be obsessive, these rules are here for me to be able to enforce it.
We, we do have it in the Uptown section on page 31.
The Uptown has it, but it doesn't have it in general temporary signs. So, we could, what did we say for?
It's 100 feet.
Yeah, it's the number five that's above it on page 30.
31. Number two, let's see, where did I read it? Uh, number's G.
Oh, yeah, or G.
So, thoughts on?
I think there should be a measurement. If we're doing it for everything.
So, 100 would be the equivalent of a little, like, a little over a lot, a normal residential lot.
Because we have had some people along Milton Way, there's one piece of property that just boom, 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 right after each other during election campaigns sometimes, and not with different names.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, like that Milton Corners, yeah.
On a fence.
Yeah, it would mean that, at least in the corners, and at least on those places, they only get one.
Yeah. But yeah, I was driving up, it wasn't in our town, but Bonnie Lake and someone on that little hill where everyone puts their posters. They're just all trying to outnumber each other, so it is kind of nice to put 100 feet.
I'll have to check how many signs someone had, doesn't determine how I vote, but hey.
Yeah, so you're thinking that on right-of-way, temporary signs in the right-of-way must comply with the following requirements. At number three, where you've got the maximum of four square feet in an area and three square feet in height, and no closer than 100 feet between each, any sign, someplace like that.
Yeah, or I'll just add in either that, or I'll just add a new line. Of this, yes.
Same.
Yeah, so if there's, yeah, so if they're different candidates or different events, fine. But if it's the same event or the same candidate, and again, it doesn't mean that it's the same event and I'm, have three different versions. No, it's the same event.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I also support a distance concept, and also on that, what Commissioner Johnson just read, the maximum of four square feet in area, and three, we just need to scratch out square feet in height.
Thank you.
I, I just think it's amazing, all of the, you know, cut and paste, and I, it's just, this is really...
Yeah, my default is square feet, so.
This is, there's a lot here, and it's really been done nicely. Let's see. I think, before I really wear folks out, I'd love to just make a comment about the electric message signs in that, um, they're not my favorite.
Shoot, I just ordered a large one.
And putting it 100 feet on your roof, I know, it'll just, and lots of color.
Light up your backyard.
Yeah, yeah. So, and then I got to thinking about what I call those giant TV screen billboards along I-5, which is on tribal property. I mean, our code says billboards are prohibited. So, new billboards couldn't be-
And I believe-
Created.
Almost all of those are tribal.
Yeah, those are tribal.
I'm confident they are.
Which I can do nothing about.
Confident. But it made me think, what if, where we have existing billboards in Milton, somebody wanted to convert their billboard from the wallpaper message to a digital message sign? Imagine what the intersection would look like.
Well, we've limited to 16 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah, we've limited the size and the brightness and the amount of movement.
Which I think is all good stuff, but it seems to me, in the world of those signs, as they are, are legal non-conforming. The assumption is they got put up according to the rules, so they were legal. Rules changed, so now they're non-conforming. And we have a theory in our code, in the world of planning, and please correct me if I'm wrong, once you're legal non-conforming, you can't make changes to increase the degree of non-conformity. So, it just seems to me, okay, so this, is there something we can say about billboards that you can't do it, or you can't have digital signs off-premise, premises? As a way to prevent more TV screens of any size, with all of that fun and color?
Can I ask a question? What do you mean by off-premise?
Well, I don't even think we, and that was on, when I talk about definitions, I don't think we have a definition for what it means to be off-premises. So, my understanding, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, I've always assumed off-premises meant that the sign that's, in this context, the sign is sitting on a piece of property and is displaying information that has nothing to do with the property underneath it, hence, a billboard. So, somebody owns the property, they've got a billboard signed, been there since the 20s or whatever, and that new wallpaper goes up and it's, it's advertising all sorts of things, but you can't avail yourself of that service at that site.
So, are you asking about too, if a person has a piece of property and they're renting out their property for a billboard, that's an electric message for anybody that they sell the message to?
So, you're saying like if the embroidery shop wanted to start advertising for Safeway?
That would be an off-premises sign, but I would defer to our manager here on that topic of-
I see what you're saying.
But that's a great example, and, you know, yeah, it's a Milton business, and et cetera, et cetera, but...
Or if you look at the one at the end of the Milton Way at-
The Embroidery.
Yuma. Well, they're-
Northwest Embroidery.
The empty lot, the empty lot.
Yes.
The empty lot.
Oh, right.
Oh, that has the billboard for like your college.
Has the big billboard.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the one with the-
It's got like two or three of them, I think.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, is it an idea to pursue? I didn't mean to bog things down, but is it?
Well, when illuminated signs are already regulated.
But it has to comply with the monument and wall signs section because of 1750, 115D.
I will say, unless-
I think our lettering is off, too, but I'm sure that's an easy fix.
Let's see. I am thinking that we are missing some language that might be helpful. Let me see. Sign regulations.
And I will say, it's not that I'm that creative a person, or think about it, but there was litigation taken to the Supreme Court relative to the new rules, and it was this very issue of billboard sign owners wanting to convert their billboards into digital signs. And their argument, uh, when they were prohibited from it, was, well, wait a minute. How do you know it's off-premise? You have to read the sign to know that. The Supreme Court, it finally worked its way all the way up, and the Supreme Court said, you know, "That's a little too strict an interpretation to be practical." And therefore, we're not, you're not regulating the content, but yeah, you got to be able to read it to make a determination. And subsequent rulings at, you know, circuit-level courts have held that commercial signage is not, what's the word, strict scrutiny, Manager Stollnecker? There's, there's strict scrutiny where you're really looking at, you cannot manage the message on that sign. It's more like non-commercial stuff, but commercial stuff, you can look at it and say, "Oh, the message here is a problem."
Okay, we need, yeah, so that does, we do need language. So, I pulled up, because I was more familiar with Verpress Code, because that's where it came from. And I was like, I know they had language that addressed this. So, on their non-conforming signs section, they have- So on their non-conforming signs section, they have a language that basically says that, you know, signs that are here shall be allowed to remain as legal non-conforming signs until the sign is removed, moved, or structurally or electrically changed, except such signs must be brought into performance with this chapter. So basically, if they want to change the structure, change the electronics, they would have to meet the current code. And our current code would not allow a billboard to be electronic. So I will add language in the non-conforming section that basically says, if you are non-conforming and you're changing anything other than minor repairs, you have to meet the new code. And that sort of address any of those kind of things, I believe.
We don't already have that in our non-conforming?
I thought we did, but I'm not finding it, so I'm.
Clean copy?
I mean, it talks about.
A legal non-conforming sign must be brought into compliance with this chapter or removed if the sign is abandoned, sign is more than 50% of its placement value, owner seeks to change the sign's structure, supporting, holding, surrounding.
Okay, it does say that, but we could add electrical.
The occupant spaces to which the sign applies is going, undergoing an expansion or renovation.
So it does.
The sign is more than 20 years old.
Okay, so it does somewhat. Yeah. But I'll, I can add electrical, though if you were going to turn it into one of those, you would have to change the structure.
Yeah.
Because it wouldn't hold. The new one, but we can add that little bit of wording. So, okay, I feel a little better.
And where would you put, where would you put that?
In non-conforming signs, 17.50, .150, that's on page 32.
That's right, okay, good, that's what I thought, all right.
And the other thing about that with the size limitation, a billboard could get split in half, somebody could do a digital, you know, ticker tape kind of reader board on it, I mean, it's.
We'll add that language.
It's just the question that came up.
Count all my business hopes and dreams over there, Wayland. I want to have all the light-up signs.
I want us to look like New York downtown. With the large screens and the movies going on.
And I just think you wouldn't need to have your lights on at night. There's, what else? No, thank you for your patience. I just, and it's a really obscure thing, but we don't have any sign code regulations for the planned development district. And the, and the current code doesn't. Is, is that something that needs to be addressed in the new code update?
I think with the new zoning update, it's going to get a zone that matches what's there. And then that would fix it. I think what I did when they wanted their signs is I just said they had to match what the industrial was. But we could, if it doesn't, I think I looked at that. But, yeah, so.
Okay. May I?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Another question, or, and I might have missed it, but I've seen in code where it makes it clear for folks that signs are not allowed to be adjacent to government properties and facilities. And the, this aquacode was saying so that it's not considered to be an endorsement because a particular sign is abutting government-owned property.
Is that not on page 16P?
Oh, please show me, please, 16?
Page 16, letter P.
Well, that's, you know, I interpreted that to mean that you couldn't have it on government property. As opposed to adjacent to.
So if you're talking about the right-of-way of government property, we've interpreted that to mean if we, if you have to have the abutting property owner's permission, the city is not going to give you that permission, and I have pulled signs. I pulled three this year. So.
And are we talking permanent signs? Are we talking about when the vehicles come for the lunches?
Well, and I guess maybe.
Those signs are on government property.
Yeah, and I guess maybe that's where you have.
Getting a permission from the government.
Like the specificity of that, because that's what I was wondering with the, like, food trucks and other events that aren't government, but they're on government property with a permit to sell here.
Yeah, so I guess that's how we took it, is we control our right-of-way, so, and we don't. And then, so we would pull them if we didn't authorize them.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure I read it in the Gig Harbor code.
And that's what we've done at the parks, and that's our justification for it. Cool.
Okay. Another issue is on page 14 of 58. Letter C, near the top. It says, "No permit is required for an exempt sign or any sign not specifically regulated by this chapter." Well, I'm, I agree with the commissioners in not allowing pole signs. That's what I interpret all the strike-through on the pole sign section. I thought that meant the pole signs were prohibited.
Do we need to add that to our prohibited list?
I mean, that's what I assumed when I saw that in the rewrite, and I agree with that, pole signs are prohibited. Well, we don't have anything regulating them. So it would seem if I wanted to put up a pole sign, you don't have any regulations.
I will say that is in the existing code, and it seems a little odd, that second half. So if we want to strike that, I would not be opposed to that.
I would just say no permit is required for an exempt sign.
Period.
Period.
Period. I would, I would think it might save a little.
It does kind of lean towards somebody being very creative.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So you're going to strike all of C?
No, the first part stays, no permit is required for an exempt sign.
All right.
But anything after that.
Thank you. I, I think part of my experience in volunteering and working at City Hall is I've witnessed, I don't know how Manager Stolneckar puts up with some of the creative things that don't pass the straight face test. You know, there's just times you're going, wow, they really want that, and they are being extremely creative and trying to make that happen. So, so that's why that grabbed my attention. And also, relative to pole signs, now that the information has been deleted, do we need to add pole signs to the list that says prohibited signs?
Yes, we do, and I will do that.
Okay.
On my list.
Well, pole sign would be something that's, poles in the ground, right?
So at the, so at the last meeting, we, I think it was the last meeting, we decided to eliminate the pole in the ground with a sign at the top and instead say that it has to have a base of at least 40%.
Like a monument?
Yeah, like, so basically, you're using the monument, and the monument says you can have at least, you know, so again, you could have two 20% or one 40% in the middle or something, but it gives it a little more substance than just the pole with the sign on top.
Is this going, is this going to somehow make the election signs with one post, one big stake legal by the definition of pole sign?
No, good question.
So the election signs where it's on a big stake, a big wooden stake.
Rather than metal.
Rather than the, is this, the pole sign says, means any sign, electric or otherwise hung, supported or cantilevered from one or more support constructed of steel pipe, steel pipe or other materials, is this going to?
No, because those are.
Make those illegal?
Permanent.
Okay. Would it help to add that? Should you say it means any permanent sign?
I mean, I can add, like, is it permanent sign? But I would think with hung, supported, you know, constructed is not a stake in the ground.
I've never thought of those as pole signs, those are skips.
I know, I just, if someone's creatively trying to take down some.
And I will say, having someone who does compliance, people try to.
Sure, they do. Somebody needs to tell them to stop.
That's why I'm trying to clarify.
Okay.
So, just while we're in the vicinity, on page 11, the definition for sandwich board signs. I'm going to see if I can find it in the Gig Harbor code. It seemed to be a little simpler. And I'm not saying Gig Harbor is the perfect thing, but it just seemed to be. Here's the Gig Harbor definition. Sandwich board slash sidewalk sign means a portable sign consisting of two sign faces hinged at the top and separated at the bottom to make itself standing.
And see, I call them sandwich A-boards.
Yeah, so it was just that, supported, you know, our definition as it's written says supported by its own frame, which is typically in the shape of an A. I'm thinking, okay, so are we looking at, I mean, we know what we mean, but anyway. Sometimes you get to be a word nerd and then you get yourself into too much detail, so. Just a thought from commissioners about tweaking the sandwich board signs.
Yes, Commissioner Alstead.
Having ordered and had to go through signage for businesses in the past, most retailers and businesses that will sell those signs for advertising, they are considered either sandwich boards or A-boards, foldable signs. So I think the concept and the explanation that is currently there does make a lot of sense to anybody when you're looking through there, if you're not sure what that is, when you're on Vistaprint or signs, fast signs, whatever, when you go and look it in, that's what they're going to come up as anyways. So it's like further.
Yeah.
A clarification on that.
Okey-dokey. In the field of definitions, on page 12, snipe sign was amended.
Which one, please?
Snipe, S-N-I-P as in pole, E, snipe sign. And the information about street furniture was deleted. And back when this concept was put into the code of a snipe sign, the term "street furniture" was also added. To really give a little bit of, it just, I just think it's, the idea of the snipe sign also saying you can't put it on street furniture makes things nice and clear. And to see it deleted, you know, street furniture is a collective, you know, it is a specific term talking about, more about stuff that the government or the public owns, the taxpayer owns.
So I took the snipe sign definition from Law Insider's legal definition, but we can definitely add back street furniture.
But I thought we have a paragraph on street furniture, so what's the difference?
We do.
There's a street furniture definition right underneath of it.
Yeah, she's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, that keeping the word "street furniture" in, within the definition of snipe sign, and then if you were like, what the heck is, sorry, what is street furniture? Then you would go to the next definition of what street furniture is.
So let's, let me double-check what we're exempting or not exempting, prohibiting.
I mean, maybe just the verbiage changing in it, because to me, it's pretty clear to not otherwise attach to trees, poles, stakes, fences, utility poles, or to other objects not applicable to the present use of the premises would be bus stops, park benches, street lamps. Street lamps, it has nothing to do with my business or what it is, so that's pretty clear, don't put it there.
I don't know that we actually use snipe signs anywhere else. We just say they can't be on government stuff. So we could say utili, or, and other, so we prohibit it on government property, including utility poles, streetlights, and other utility equipment. We could add street furniture in that list.
That would be easy, and then the.
Because we don't actually, I'm not sure that we use the term snipe anywhere else in the chapter.
And then street furniture is defined below.
It was a definition that was there, and I was just trying to simplify it.
Yeah, because if I was just reading through that as a Joe Schmel, I'd be like, street furniture, like putting signs on the couches people put out for free? That's what I was saying.
It says free, is that a snipe sign?
And I've also had, it's interesting, because that is the legal definition for that, but yet the glossary of signs has it as a paper strip or price designation which is faced, which is pasted on the face of an existing advertising panel as a snipe. And I also had a guy who was arguing with me that snipe was used when you're like trying to annoy your neighbor. So it's a term that I'm not sure has a clear understanding, but it would, if our concern is street furniture, I think the place to put it would be under prohibited P.
It's snipe hunting.
Snipe hunting, let's go.
Let's not do that. And that's where, you know, like I said, I, I didn't, nobody had a consistent definition either. It was a little, so does that?
I would just add that the alternative to snipe sign was bandit sign. And it was, it was just, I mean, this was back when this, we had a major sign code revision, I don't know, back in 2009? So, thinking in terms and all that sort of thing changes, but the current definition of snipe sign, it's saying you can't nail up a sign on a tree. So if, you know, if it's my property and I want to nail up a sign on a tree, that's a snipe sign.
Then we, but the interesting part is, if you're looking at the red line section, there was nothing in the current, there was nothing in the current code that prohibits snipe signs.
Yes, well, the current code, page 16 of 58, letter M as in Milton, and it's under the heading of prohibited signs. Letter M says snipe signs are prohibited. So maybe there's some repetition and way to consolidate things, but we've had issues in the past.
Oh, it is there, okay, I take it back.
Where businesses have just said, oh, look at this great wonderful railing, and it's the taxpayer who put that in on Milton Way, and they just tie up their banner. So it was that general theme of you don't put stuff on city property, you know, or you don't put it on, you know, vaults.
Yeah, which I guess, again, comes back to what we were trying to do in P, but we can do it either. And I will clarify, we, because I know there was been discussion that in the past, there are black fences that are on property lines, and the city does not maintain those. We may have put them in, those are not considered city property. There is the silver railings that are sort of embedded in the sidewalk. We do consider those city property, because we would fix those if they got dented or just hit or whatever, like guardrails, and we would not allow signs on those.
So I just want to be on record, I completely disagree with that perspective.
And I understand that, we've had that discussion a year ago.
The whole concept of, well, if we don't maintain it, even though the taxpayer has paid for it, it's not ours. That means every single unopened right-of-way that the city doesn't maintain, but it shows up on a map, on a plat, that belongs to the property owner. I mean, it's just the logic, the taxpayers paid for those fences, that's city property. And I know the area you're talking about, you can very easily see that it is the fencing that we all paid for where the blocks, when Milton Way was widened. And so to say that fence is on the property line, I'm not so sure, because you can see on the other side of the street, you see the city, the taxpayer paid for a fence, and you see a private fence farther inward. So, you know, it just seems to me.
And I'm just saying that this was discussed last year amongst multiple staff, and this was, and we pulled old contracts, and we pulled old stuff, and this is the determination that has been met, so I'm just laying it out there.
So if the city doesn't maintain it and the city's paid for it, it's mine.
I'm saying those fences, I'm not, I didn't say everything, but I'm saying those, yes. The city, I believe, installed a lot of those fences as part of the street project, but the assumption was never that they were going to be city fences, is from what we can find, and what we, we have never maintained them, we have never done anything. There are other, I mean, there are, you know, so in the case of that, but the ones that are the railings that are embedded in the sidewalk, they are ones we maintain. And so just to kind of clarify on the record.
So that was probably when, when the agreements were first made or the construction and how it was designed at that time.
So with that, on that property, would that fence then be the responsibility of the property?
Yes.
Yes.
So then they would still need to put a sign there to get the permission of?
Yes, but if a property owner decides to do it under the things, they would be allowed to.
Okay. Okay. I mean, has, has it historically been an issue with that, say, specific area?
Only that there's a difference of opinion between...
Political.
Who thinks it should be allowed and who doesn't.
Well, and you'll also see on that, the black chain link fence that has the reinforcement on the top, that's taxpayer bought, there's fencing attached to it that doesn't, I mean, it's very clear, property owner did this, city did this, and property lines.
And we're not, again, I don't, I don't want to sidetrack us.
Should the city take them out?
And I'm not denying that the city, we're not denying the city put it in, but I just wanted to, I know it was an issue.
They are not maintaining.
So this discussion is out of scope, is what you're saying.
So we are probably getting out, so.
So we'll, we'll table that for a post-meeting discussion.
Yeah.
All right, um, any further comments?
Measuring signs was the other biggie. It seems to me that we've got a great start with making some clarity and helping people understand how signs are measured. In another city, there, they make a distinction that I don't know if really applies to the way our code is currently written and amended at this point, but this idea of, and I'll just read off, related to a specific type of sign, but the formula is, uh, one where there, and I'll read the, just read what the verbiage is, uh, maximum sign area example, 24 square feet for a single side, or 48 square feet total on all sides. And that's different than what we have.
What page?
Well, we have formulas for total sign area.
We do.
Yeah, page 18, where are we?
Yeah, page 18 of 58 is probably the best place to look.
So the thing that jumped out at me was looking at page 18 and looking at a sign, the, uh, figure number two, and I'm imagining this is looking from the top down, uh, in aerial view, a sign with two faces, the sign area is equal to one of those faces. And so if, just to make life easy, if, you know, in a particular example, the sign size was 100 square feet, that's your maximum size allocation, somebody could make a 100-square-foot one-face sign, or 100-square-foot two-faced sign, and it's not until they get to a triangle or a four-sided sign that the overall bulk of that sign starts to reduce.
So I think the assumption is that a monument sign is going to be two-sided, so when you set those, you're taking that into account.
Okay. Okay, I, it's, uh, and do we have anything in our code that says, "Here's your total size allocation, but a particular sign face can be no bigger than X?"
So what we have is, we have your sign face, and we have the height of a sign.
Okay.
So you have to meet both of those. And the base, but again, you have to be within the, the height.
It's like mon, we kind of have it by sign type, like your monument signs, page 23, you've got 36 square feet for one zone, 64 for another zone, 32 for another zone.
Okay, well, it was just seeing different ways of doing things and just, I, and the fact that we're making changes, keeping a lot of the same sign dimensional information, some has been made bigger, and just thinking, well, how does that really work out? And I'll just cite an easier example of the sandwich board signs, I just think a four-foot tall sandwich board sign is way, it's really too big.
I would say that's the standard, that's the standard. I measured the, the ones that we use at the city, and it's four feet, I also measured the temporary signs to make sure, and for the political and in that, that's what they are. And I think they're four when they're, when they're closed, so by the time you open them, you're more like three and a half.
But you can buy smaller sandwich board signs, and in fact, there are smaller sandwich board signs on display right now in the city.
Yes, the, the standard size for them is about four feet.
Oh, I just, it's just too big.
I have no problem with that size, I think that's common in every city.
Yeah, especially if it's the standard size, and also you're thinking that that's for, uh, appealing to driving traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's what the majority of them are for, especially for like my business, if I were to have a sign like that, you can't, you wouldn't need to see it when you're walking by, you would need to see it when you're straight over, so that you would need to have that little boulder, which, you know, even just with our logo, made it bolder because of the lack of visibility.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, well, I, I hear I'm being overruled on that one, that's okay. Next comment is on page 24 of 58. Is there some way to reverse the sequence, because it's pretty hard to see the really critical thing that's being displayed there, which is, for example, that middle sign expressing, 'cause it's such a short height.
Yeah, still the graphic, and that's the way it is, but I can see if there's a better graphic.
If, and, and the sign beyond it of the two 20% represented, I mean, you really, really have to look at it, and it's, uh, it's not as simple as figure number four, that, I mean, it just makes it, it's just such a clear, simple expression.
No, and I could just make a graphic, too, I mean, the ones, you can probably tell the difference between the ones I made and the ones I borrowed.
Too bad we don't have a graphic designer on staff.
I can, it won't, I mean, what we're saying is that one's so small back there, so.
I mean, it's, it's legible.
It, it's a little, it is a little.
I think it's picture resolution, and if you suffer from challenging vision issues, it's like, what's there?
But the images are supplemental to the text.
You get my meaning. But is it nearsight and or far sight, and it doesn't, doesn't matter.
I am both.
So, um, okay, so I, I think I've covered, uh, most of that issue, definitions, just to recap, um, we, definition for event, or something in there to help really crisp that up, or happening, an off-premises sign is definition, um, yard sign, yard sign is used in the temporary sign section, but there's no definition for it. Uh, projecting sign, uh, I think in, in the Uptown standards, the word perpendicular sign is used, but in either case, there's not a definition, and I'd suggest that those might be helpful clarifications. And I think that's it, I've said enough, so, thank you. And I, forgive me, uh, based on what the commission may decide, 'cause tonight it's an action item, I don't know if commissioners are ready to vote on it.
I am with this.
But, uh, with that, there's other Scribner errors, and there's other, I mean, there's things to tighten up and fix, and, um, I'm at a point where typing is just incredibly difficult, so I would...
So at this point, we're still under the old sign code, and this has been going on for how many years now? For the sign code? Two years?
Old time code?
Two and a half years, yeah, two years, two and a half years.
It's about two...
Yeah.
Two and a half, yeah.
So, um, with acknowledging that there are some edits, how are people feeling as far as confidence and staff are able to make those edits? Are we ready to proceed with any recommendations?
I feel confident in the edits, we've been discussing this for three sessions. If we want a copy edit, I will volunteer to help if you want, I'm technical writer and editor, or not, also fine by me, but I feel that we've discussed it at length, and I think it's better that we be expedient at this point.
Do you want me to run through?
Or I put up my fat sign.
Better do it before we pass it.
Oh, yeah, I need to get grandfathered in.
And I'm designing it for her tomorrow.
Want to just give us a general scope of, of the comments you heard?
So this is what I have that I would be editing, editing, correcting. Um, add that a property owner can remove a sign in the right-of-way in, in front of them without having to get permission from anybody. Um, define it in events and happening, define off-premise, define yard sign, and, um, clarify that we've, we're using both projecting and perpendicular, and those are the same thing, so choosing one of those, and then defining if we need to. Um, make five days. Oh, right-of-way, um, okay, 100%, oh, remove the word temporary from the signs in the right-of-way that require approval, I have it marked, 100 feet between temporary signs, um, add, um, if they change the electrical to the non-conforming, they would have to meet the new codes, which would, in essence, prevent anyone from making giant billboards. Um, add planned development to those sections, add pole signs being prohibited, and clarify the exemption that permit is required, is not required for exempt signs, eliminate the remainder of that sentence, and see if I can find a better, or design a better figure five graphic.
Question. Want to add, uh, the one about the property owner can remove signs, can he throw them away?
Yeah.
We did decide that, 'cause I really have a problem with it, but that's okay.
But you also have to get permission from the property owner, so if you don't have the...
No, 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 it's the property owner.
But I, I would say if the, if the person stuck it there...
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, thank you, Sabbath, yes, I understand.
Yeah, if they didn't give you permission.
Yeah.
Now, anyone who wants to give signs to the city, I will call them, 'cause I, I usually try to let, when I pull signs, I do try to let the...
Yeah, that's okay, I agree with that.
The person running, saying, "Hey, I've got these for a week, you get a week to come..." Now, granted, I still have one that's a month or two, but I will toss it now.
Great, I think that's a great summary of the revisions, anything to add to those?
Yeah, and if anyone did see any little Scribner things, feel free to let me know those, and I will clean it up before.
One other question. 'Cause we skirt around the idea of free speech and political signs, does that fall under temporary signs? Anything that's in a yard, no matter what it says?
So, what?
Except a sign.
Like the ones that are expletives down on my street on Emerald?
Well, a couple places, yeah.
Come up on the garages.
So, um, what we do with those...
Send me out to snipe hunt.
Temporary signs.
180 days.
So, yeah, you can't have, in essence, you can't have a permanent sign on a residence. You can have, um, the ones that would apply to residences is a yard sign, which we're gonna define, um, that is 24 to 36, can be up for more than, can be up for no more than 180 days, and then anything else that they have, so if you had a happy birthday or whatever, it can be up for 90 days. Um, we did have an issue, let's see, how did we do that? There was one where somebody had to make it a flag, and that's how we dealt with the one that had expletives, that was a wall sign. Not sure how we...
That was up for a while.
Yes, we had a discussion back and forth with the property owner on that one. Um, 'cause exempt signs, I think it says like flag, so he had to hang it on a thing.
On a flagpole.
On a flagpole.
Okay.
And that way it wasn't sprobed permanently, I mean, I guess theoretically he could, otherwise he could have it for 90 days, but, which would be great, 'cause then he'd have to take it down, but...
Okay.
Because he put it on a flagpole, and you can't really see it then unless the wind's blowing, that's how we resolved that issue.
My kid reads now, so.
I know. Yes, that one came to council, that was...
Do you have another, if I may?
Yes, absolutely.
On page 20 of 58, uh, the section Signs in the Right-of-Way, uh, B, portable signs and temporary signs, is that the one? We have some, and I might be in the wrong place, forgive me, but we have something that says you can't put a sign in an island or a median, I think we might want to include roundabouts.
That's an island.
I would think so, but...
That's an island, we talked about that last time.
You did, oh, excuse me, and what was the result?
Yeah, those would be islands.
Those are islands, okay. And the area that is, uh, at the confluence of Milton Way, Oak Street, 11th, 11th jog...
Island.
That's an island, okay.
And so it's...
Is there something in the code that we can define what we mean by islands, or which ones are, or something, because?
I, I think we're, I mean, there's always that fine line, but I think that's why we're saying islands, 'cause it didn't say islands before, I don't believe.
It said traffic islands.
No, it said median strips, and so that's why we're adding traffic islands, and I think that is, it's vague enough that we can, you know, then we can say, "It's a roundabout, it's that one, it's, doesn't have, you know..."
It's a triangle, it's a circle, it's a square, it's still...
Yeah, so I think we're okay, and again, if we can plant something in that, that will help. I'll keep bugging them until I can get it done.
Okay, um, I think that's pretty much what it is, and then we're saying Scribner errors, or, I mean, I'd love to collaborate with Commissioner Olar on that topic of catching things.
Yeah, if you have things marked, you can give it to me, or if you see something you want to send it to me, but I will, and I will try, when I get to my comments, we are severely understaffed, I'm not there yet, but that will be coming, I will try to get, I'm trying to get better at doing this while it's fresh in my brain, so I will try to get the edits done sooner rather than later, so that I can send them out, and if anybody sees anything that, again, it's not substantive, but has a comment on that I can tweak a little bit, or an error that you find, that way we can correct those before it goes to council.
So we're not gonna vote on this till...
We can vote on it tonight if you would like.
Oh, may I make the motion?
Seconded.
She's ready, she's like, "I wrote it."
I gotta go to the bathroom. No, I'm only kidding. All right, uh, today is November 8th, sign code amendments. A recommended motion, I move to recommend to the City Council the draft proposal for amendments to the MMC Chapter 17.50, sign code as presented by staff and through the amend, through the comments and amendments we liked added to it to be presented to council.
So seconded.
All right, so we have a motion to forward this on to City Council as amended, as...
Let's see, I'll just maybe just as amended by planning commission?
Perfect.
That's good.
So, recommended motion is move to recommend to the City Council the draft proposal for amendments to Milton Municipal Code, Chapter 1750, sign code as presented by staff and amended by, um, Planning Commission.
Yep.
Perfect. All those in favor?
I...
We weren't gonna discuss it?
Oh.
We just did.
Okay, then I vote no, and I'll just not explain my reason why, because we didn't discuss it, okay?
Whoa.
Oh, you mean, we didn't discuss the reason that we're moving, so?
Yeah, um, there is the option to, yes, we can open it up for discussion before voting.
Okay, I'm gonna motion, the reason I made the motion is the motion person, is I agree we have kicked it around enough, it's well done, the work that the previous planning commission did laid a lot of groundwork for us, and there's, we need to get it updated now, instead of keeping it longer, and get it done this year.
Agreed.
I apologize, who seconded it?
I did.
And your comment?
Oh, are there any further comments or questions about, yes, Commissioner Wynn?
In discussing it, I'm going to make the uncomfortable statement, and I apologize for this, is that based on my past experience with wireless communication facilities document, which was pretty embarrassing at the council level, I no longer subscribe to that idea of passing a raw draft on, if I'm gonna approve something that goes to council, I want to see the final document. So if commissioners don't want to see the final, it's not about trust, it's, it's, I mean, we trusted last time, and it was quite a boondoggle, and I sat there kind of embarrassed in the audience, and, and it was just a confluence of challenges that occurred, no ill will, but as a policy, that's my position, and so that's why I would... And so that's why I would not support sending this on to council. So that's my discussion.
Any further discussion or comments?
There has to be a limited discussion. We've discussed this for three meetings for the bulk of the meeting. I know that not everybody attended that every meeting, but that has been the work of this commission for three meetings. And at some point, we have to be done. We can't just keep spinning our wheels.
The House of Representatives and not getting anything done. Ooh, sorry. I'm in a good mood tonight.
Okay, so.
Well, if other people are allowed to speak again, I didn't, I wanted to be sure to hear from others. But since people are speaking again, I will just say I like to ensure that we're delivering the best product we can to council. I am not looking to stretch this thing out. I'm looking to ensure that we deliver a quality product. In the past, when I have gone to staff and said, you know, I see this, this and this. Staff has respectfully said, you know, planning commission approved the document. I can't make changes now. So those are my two experiences. And I'm just, you know, present that and I respect the fact that it's been a three-month discussion. I would expect that we'd see a finished document and we'd be starting a new topic next month.
Point of clarification.
So, thank you.
All right.
It's not a final document, right? We don't.
We approve it.
We don't finalize documents, is that right?
Final decision is made by the council and they could.
That's when it goes through the attorneys.
They could, they could approve it. But yes, it will go to the attorneys for review.
Right.
And occasionally either the attorneys or council could change. But yes, I mean, yes, you would. Ideally, it would be nice that we, that I'm not fixing things after the fact. But at the same time, I think the substance will be there. We'll give everyone a chance to look at it. And it, this has been, you know, this is a procedure that has been a part of the planning commission is to recommend it with certain changes, so.
Maybe it's something we need to talk about is like getting, trying to find all the answers when it first comes to us as a draft. I mean, do all your research before it comes, you know, three times I can accept. Four times I can't because we only have X amount of time. And it's imperative to me that we, we can change things if it's not working. We're allowed to do that. We can ask the council, I can go up as a council, I mean, as a person and say, you know, I have a problem with this in zoning. It really, council will send it back to planning. That can be done, but you gotta have something that's stronger than what you had before. This is stronger than we've ever had. It's clearer than we've ever had. And yes, there are minor things in it, but you know, even the world's not perfect. And council, there's council people that don't do their research. It's incumbent on all of us to get our research done before we even start talking on it. I mean, that's my personal belief. We, once we start moving, yeah, it's okay if you find something later, then you send it to staff so staff can let all of us see it. And we go, oh, yeah, that's right. And we come in, we go, I agree. I agree. If it had come to us before, we wouldn't be sitting here for an hour and a half. And I'm sorry. I mean, we got to have the information that we know if there's a problem, let the staff know and say, I have a problem with this. Will you please let the other council people know about it? That's what we do. That's what's fair, is you let us know before. Every, me, I've made the mistake too. But that's what I'm saying. Get it done. How much, we can keep researching and researching and believe me, I love to research. But there comes a point where you say, we've got it better than what we had it.
Commissioner, is it okay if I call on you and just ask for some of your input as far as how you're feeling with the processes or with?
I believe it's time to put this to bed.
Okay.
Okay, we've, you know, we were, a lot of, some of us were involved in doing the sign code a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And that took us at least a year.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken. You know, with some minor interruptions, but. What I saw tonight with the red line pages. I agree with, you know, probably ninety-nine percent of it. And when it comes to definitions. I'm a person that says, you know, we have people working in the office. If they don't have the intelligence to come and say, what are the rules for me to put this sign up? Then I'm sorry for them. All right?
Yeah.
But plus they can't get permits anyway. If it's not done or if it's not done properly. You know, I've dealt with permits, I've dealt with, you know, inspections and stuff like that in the past for a lot of other things. But what we have here is quite a step above what we have.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm happy with it. I'm glad we're going to say, yeah, send it to council. And don't we have anything else going on? Are there other items we should be dealing with?
We have a whole list of stuff that we, you know, that we're not getting to. As far as for the year's agenda, and I know that's probably going to be, I would guess, on next month's packet, right?
Should have been this month, but yes.
Yeah. So with that.
What happened to chickens?
Roosters.
Chickens has been put to bed.
For scottums.
All right, so I feel like we've discussed this at full length. We've given everyone an opportunity to speak their mind. So with that, if we're okay, let's proceed with the vote. All those in favor of, as I read earlier, proposing the cement, or I don't have. The move to recommend to the city council the draft proposal for amendments to Milton Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen fifty, sign code as presented by staff and amended by the planning commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. Five to one. That closes out that portion of our agenda for tonight. Moving on to staff reports.
So, yes, I will lead with my staffing. We're a little understaffed right now, so I do ask for patience by everybody. Our permit tech position will be open again. The position did not work out. And then the public works director is mostly out on some personal family leave. So between all the other positions as well. So we're a little, we're a little tight right now. That being said, yes, I will be bringing to the next meeting the draft 2024 work plan. I have everybody's list from last year that we sort of put together. If anybody has things they have thought of, they're welcome to send that at any time. I can kind of add that as discussion. We will have some real specific next year because we will be finalizing the comp plan. And we will be doing major work on the draft code amendments that are tied to that. So I don't know how much else we'll be able to do next year. But there is some, finishing off this year's work plan, there's, again, there's a few code things that I felt like we need to sort of clarify and fix. So I will try to bring that as well to the next meeting. Again, nothing that's changing policy, nothing that's changing the intent, just more, there's some, there's some. We have like a interpretation that was done probably seven years ago that basically says this needs to be changed in the code eventually when you get around to it. So we, it's that kind of stuff. So I'll bring that hopefully at the next meeting, so. And then I believe we will be electing new chair for the following year or however you guys decide to do that at the December meeting as well.
Is that December?
Yes.
Next month, my gosh.
I know.
Yeah, we're almost to the end of the year.
I know.
I don't think it's November, so.
All right, so I think that covers commissioner, or sorry, staff reports. So under commissioner reports.
I gotta say, it was nice to see people out there for trunk or treat. I was trying to get people from the civil service commission, but they all, it's in the middle of their work. So it was a little tough for them to make it, but it was fun. And as far as civil service commission goes, just a quick note. We are fully staffed in law enforcement right now. And this is the first time in ages, probably since I've been on that commission. I'm on my second term, so it's been a while. And I'm pretty happy to see everything working out.
And I love Milton.
That's all.
Perfect. Commissioner Oler?
Not much to report, except to just make clear to folks, I wasn't trying to extend the discussion. I just wanted to confirm that things were all set and right and best. And I can appreciate the challenge of, you know, it's a daunting task. It's a daunting task. But I watch council and I, you know, they're counting on us, so. And that's all. Thank you.
For myself, I wanted to remind everyone that we will have the Santa parade in December. I know that I did that with the Parks Commission. Well, it was a little bit of everyone kind of representing our different groups. It was kind of a double date for us last, last year because it was me and my husband who's in Parks, another guy from Parks and his wife that was in Silver Service. So definitely encourage you guys to come out. It is so cute to just see, again, same idea, the trunk or treat. When you're able to drive the community, see the kettos, hand out candy, it's just really fun. I don't have the date on that, but if anyone wants to email me as far as within the city of Milton, I'm happy to start coordinating, meeting up and kicking some other floats bets or something, getting some fun ideas out.
December twenty-first.
So December twenty-first is the day of the event.
Festivity is set to kick off at twelve-thirty.
Thanks.
Parks, a Parks one?
No, so we need to decide if we want to have our own float, if we want to partner with others. There's going to be some, if we want to do our own float, we'll want to get an idea of how many people and then we'll need to make some commitments as far as meeting at least once or twice beforehand to figure out the theme of our float.
A float can be a car. It could be a truck.
Yeah, if someone's got a truck bed. As I said, last year, we kind of just did it as a group effort because we were kind of late in the game of doing it. But I would love to put a theme together and make it even more special for the kids. And then, yeah, I also written down that we need to do the 2024 work plan. So with that, it sounds like you'll email out kind of what you had left over so that we can send you things ahead of time, so that we can really just be focused next meeting on that. Hearing some of the feedback I'm getting today, I was wondering what people would think of. I know in another advisory committee, we kind of sometimes do small groups, which means additional meetings ahead of time to try to get these things narrowed down a little bit so that there's something more presented to the group when it comes. I don't know if that makes things more efficient, less efficient, but if we want to.
Finance committee, you're trying to say like council gets three people together at the finance committee and they go over stuff. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, they kind of just do work groups on the shape advisory committee. And so if there's, you know, they'll say, hey, next month, we're going to discuss this and we're going to be starting to put this together if we've got two or three people that are passionate about looking at this stuff and investing more ahead of time. I mean, it's an idea, but I know you're also short-staffed and that probably might be sucking at more of your time.
I have to see if that's even.
Acceptable in our.
Because we're a commission for the city, for the city council.
Yeah, but if other people have other ideas of ways we can make this more efficient in here. I do agree that there's just a lot of stuff we need to make recommendations on, get through, vetted through. You know, as much as I'd love to strive for perfection. I think there's a lot of gaps in our code that we need to also just be working towards improvement and allowing ourselves to incrementally improve a bit as well. So if people have ideas, I'm open to them and then we can work out whether or not it's legal before we start taking any action there on that. That's, that's all my ramblings for today. If there's any other commissioner reports?
The trunk or treat was really fun. Participated with Susan. You guys should participate next year. It was a joy and you and your little bumblebee stole the show. So it was really cool to see the community out and we don't get a ton of trick or treaters over on Emerald. So it was really fun to like see the community, see a lot of the clients or neighbors, our kids, my son's classmates and to have it focused at the city was really cool. And that's about it for me.
Yeah.
I don't have a staff report today.
Trunk or treat was fun. Next year, we have to do a flash mob, the thriller.
And a competition. We decided there needs to be a vote from the community on which booth won.
Yes, yes, we used, that needs to be done because we were sure.
We would have won. I brought the Pokemon cards and we had like fruit snacks for the littles. Just saying.
And I was Cruella. I appreciate all the work. I mean, everybody works hard in this city. And I know, I respect the staff and I'm sorry that the understaffing right now causes time elements and hardships for working people. I appreciate what you do.
All right, so I think that sums up commissioner report. So our next regular meeting is December thirteenth, 2023. Time is seven fifty-one. Call this meeting adjourned.